Basically, this is the political bar.
Okay, we're good.
Just need a motion to turn question mark second.
Oh, hang on.
Please your agenda.
I don't know.
Just second it for me, well, I'll give you the notes.
I'm your granny.
All in favor? Any pose? Motion carries four to zero. We are back with Buffalo Middle for their local school improvement council presentation.
Welcome to Buffalo Middle School. We are going to give you some entertainment. And then we will go on with some of the boring stuff.
Right.
But some of the kids need to get to some extracurricular activities.
Sure.
So I believe Mr. Stumbo, your group's going first. This is our Project Leadway, two of our classes.
Alright.
Four forty-five.
Oh, forty-six, I'm sorry.
You have four forty-six.
Four forty-five, you're right.
Four forty-five.
Hello, Mr. Stumbo. I teach seventh grade science and Project Leadway, design and modeling. So these kids here are in my design and modeling course. And throughout the year, we, the goal was to go from an idea to two dimensions, to three dimensions, to a physical object. So throughout the year, we, you know, did different activities and built up to this point where we were given patients that had cerebral palsy and we had to develop a therapeutic toy for them. So I split the group. The big group, instead of groups of three, I did a research group and a development group. My goal was instead of getting each group to give me a little bit lesser quality, I wanted to get better quality items. So I figured it more of a think tank, think tank setting would be better for that. So this group here was part of our development group. The development group took the ideas and tried to figure out how to make that a reality. So they want to present one of the toys that we came up with. This is the Lila, Jovi, Georgia, and Aubrey.
Our patient's name is Daniel. He's a three-year-old boy. He, he's trying to improve on his pincer grasp. And he loves to play with building blocks and his favorite food is chicken tenders with ketchup.
The last part is really important because this toy kind of simulates a ketchup packet for tearing it open like this. And then my favorite part, the button on the top for the picture of this. And then tear it apart for the building blocks. And we made a lot of improvements throughout. We took the button, which was kind of like our last thing that we put in. And then we had to just put other things to make it work better for this part.
Yeah, this one specifically was a lot of trial and error. We, we had a, we got a basic twisty fidget first and then we started, alright, well, what if we add this to it? What about we add that to it? And this is finally what we came up with for that one. So, uh, good thing is, uh, you all each get one of these. So if you want to hand those out.
They created, they created this.
So these came from your 3D printer?
Yeah, a 3D printer. So what we did was, that's a good question. There's a 3D software called TinkerCad. It's a, like AutoCAD but for kids. So it, it leads directly into AutoCAD, so it's a building block. So that's the 3D modeling software. And then I can take that and actually 3D print them, the items. So, yeah, it's a full, fully Project Leadway toys that we come up with. So do you want to switch? So these are members of the research department. So this, they came up with a lot of the ideas. Of course, they ended up towards the end, all working on getting the items functional and working. But they were the ones that kind of came up with some of the original design ideas. So they want to introduce you to this toy. And we have Lucy, Levi, and Marley.
So our patient's name was Zach. He's a seven-year-old boy and he loves doing crafts with his mom. We wanted to make a toy for his hand and eye coordination. This is the toy. This represents the paintbrush. And then also with the maze, it kind of represents like paintbrush strokes. And then the goal is to get from the top to the bottom. So over time, this took us about three weeks to think of and then actually 3D print.
Thank you. That's kind of all we got for you guys. If you have any questions, I'm here to address those.
How did they, uh, how did you guys, um, your, your clients, the, the students that you made these for? How, how did you, how did you connect with those?
Uh, it was just a preset. Like, these were like actual case studies and then they just, uh, they changed the names and stuff in the coursework. I think next year, we'll try to incorporate not just cerebral palsy, but maybe a different neurological disorder or some kind of other disorder that needs some kind of therapeutic toy. So it's not the same exact thing each year and I can kind of, you know, cast a wide net.
The, uh, the plans for these items, um, were, are there, were these plans located online anywhere or did they have to?
Talking about the, those, that's, that, these toys were fully 100% thought out by our class.
Okay.
Start to finish.
Yeah, start the idea to 2D drawings, to 3D designs, to planning them.
Maybe on the way out, you can take them through your room where you do those.
Yes.
I'll, uh, I'm, I'll send you guys some information. I was listening to a, a podcast yesterday. And there is a new, um, there's a new website out where it's exactly this topic. For folks who have 3D printers, for them to be able to make, um, items to help folks with special needs. And people can actually put in orders. And, and you can kind of like pick up the order is the way I understand it. But I'll, I'll send it, and it, they've got blueprints ready to go.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah.
For, to, uh, to assist in the process. So I just heard about it yesterday, but it's exactly, it's exactly this topic. So I'll send you the information.
Yeah, awesome.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Stumbo. Guys, thank you.
Thanks, great job.
Thank you. Okay, now we can have our eighth grade. This is, um, this Hannah.
She has a PowerPoint. She has a PowerPoint.
Oh, look, you have a little place that we can do it also. Alright, and this one's different, this one. It's showing you that's the shoulder, so it goes in like this. So she'll point it up here. And then the other is up there.
Are we gonna?
I'm just, when you're, when you're doing it, you can ask if anyone.
One twenty every day.
Like that.
And now squeeze.
You can do reading.
I do want to learn how they do like one of the squeezes.
Yes. Okay. Everybody, if you get, like, if something doesn't work, I can tell it for you, okay? I'm gonna spare you guys, um, yes, as, well, many of you have seen me present many times when I was at CK doing Vex, but I am actually just gonna let the girls present today.
Medical Detectives Become a Health Detective, presented by Laney Anson and O.G. Can we just tap on it?
I think so. Is there a, not?
You have the keys on the laptop.
Yeah, just do the laptop.
Okay. What is a medical detective? Become a health detective today. Medical Detectives is a cool class where students explore human body systems, solve medical mysteries, track down the source of outbreaks, and learn to use science to find clues about health and wellness. Okay. What you'll learn, we learn how to take vital signs, measure our heart rate, respiration rate, and blood pressure. We also learn about our body systems and medical mystery. Would anybody like to get their blood pressure taken?
Not me.
They were hoping on you because they had a joke to go with it.
I've taken a couple of hours ago and it was not good.
A couple of years, did you say?
No, a couple of hours ago.
Were you on me? Hope I don't blow it.
So what they had to do in class was pretend that they were the, uh, you know, medical personnel. And then they tested their, um, friends' vital signs, or took their friends' vital signs. So they would sit down and they would ask them questions and they would take their temperature. They would get their respiration rate. We did their blood pressure, because what is common for a child that's under their age versus an adult? What would be the common, um, temperature that they would have? What would be, um, a good respiration rate? And so when they learned those things, it let them see in a medical file. Or these are the very first things that a doctor gets as soon as you walk into their office. Before they see you, they see these stats. So they had to learn what is abnormally high, what is abnormally low? And what is normal for a specific age range?
Which was, then adult is one twenty over eighty is the average for your blood pressure.
We did have some readings where the kids were like, okay, if yours keeps reading like this over a few days, we would have to make sure that, with the nurse, that it was okay, because I was just saying.
That's a, that's a little high, but. We'll, uh, we'll take that medication right home.
Sure, I want to see if that makes sense.
Miss Hannah, stop it. Okay, then you'll have to start again.
Is there another volunteer?
Yes.
I don't need to tell you that I'm top eight personally and I take three blood pressure pills a day.
I think it has to do with, before, okay? That's probably one of the reasons.
And then it will just squeeze a little bit.
Yeah.
So Laney actually wants to be a nurse when she gets older. And Ellie has expressed she wants to do like anesthesiologist, she wants to do baby nursing. So they have said, we would really like to learn how to do it with the stethoscope, like the old school way. And I told them, I do not have to access it. But it would be great, um, for, I would say, we don't have the stethoscope.
That would be awesome.
So for this next round, it would be great, um, to get our nurse to come over and show them how to, to do it with the pump and stuff, but we would have to get
Yeah.
the supplies. And then Laney, we talked about bringing in a stethoscope with like her mom and we learned.
I'll say, we can, I can probably make that happen for you.
Yeah, I do not know how to do it. I know my mother does, but I've just, and then we had these and I didn't even think about that it would be really cool for them to learn the old school way.
A hundred over seventy.
Over?
Over.
Oh, yours is good. Yours is good.
Okay. And then here are just some, like, some pictures of us doing, um, each other's blood pressure.
Did you find any kids with high blood pressure?
Um, there were a few with a little bit higher, but nothing crazy. I think a lot of us were worried of ours, you know, like.
Well, stress will cause it to go up too.
Yeah. Dendrites, the brain messengers. Dendrites are vital components and neurons that help brain cells communicate. They receive messages from other cells, playing a key role in our nervous system, ensuring smooth and effective signaling throughout the body. And we were able to work in teams of two. And it was really fun doing hands-on learning, especially with this. I know I used candy for mine. I think we used eye cleaners. Yeah, and it was super fun doing it because we made like kind of like an animation to. Which I thought was really cool.
It's not playing. Well, what happened, it's a stop animation. And so that little puffball is what, this is actually Luke Rutherford's group. And they decided that they wanted to use the puffball as their signal. So this would be signaling the nerve impulse that's going through. So you'd have to start on one end of the dendrite and then show that it's going to send the signal through. And they had to learn every part of it and the, um, correct medical terms. And then it would have to get to the next dendrite. And so they had to understand that it is nerve impulses. And when those are disrupted, what happens to the body? And that was a cool animation, but it's not working. It works in the classroom.
Okay, and then here are just some pictures of us making them. Okay. Disease diagnosing activities, outbreak tracing. We track down sources of disease outbreaks. One of posters, creating posters for disease-causing agents. Teamwork, we work together to find solutions effectively. Patient files, study files to diagnose health conditions. Investigation skills, we use clues to solve medical mysteries. Interactive learning, engage in hands-on activities in class. These are some of the one of posters we do. This is my personal favorite thing we did. We basically know a disease, we kind of have to pick out. We have to find symptoms of disease, root of infection, pictures of bacteria cells, and their scientific name along with the common name. And this one was actually mine. It was MRSA, which is a staph infection. And I did symptoms of disease, root of infection, where it can be found and who it can infect. And then, yeah, like places where it's found and like how it's spread. Okay. What's the cause, what's the data set? So this was actually one of the things that we had to do in class. And we had to solve an outbreak about who got sick during the food cask and talk to Tuesday, which is like gatherings and they were outside. And from all the numbers that we got, we did our percentages. And whoever, like, whichever food had the highest attack rate is what was making people sick. And this one was onion dip. And we thought that it made people sick because it was left outside for too long. This one was running less. And we think it's probably because it was contaminated, probably just wasn't very good for your body especially. And wasn't washed.
Oh, that's not coming out. That is the CDC website. And, um, you guys can tell them what we did on the CDC website.
Um, we did a lot of like virtual learning, I guess you'd say. It was really fun. I, I think I wonder what went on personally, I'm sure they made it too.
Um, it's actually, it would be, I think there's still like nineteen scenarios. And so if, they have to work themselves through levels. And through each scenario, it will give them like a victim or a group of victims and tell you where it occurred. Like, these people have come to the hospital with these symptoms. And you have to go get clues throughout, like, their day or throughout the city in order to be able to come up with the, the why. So it helped them to understand, like, it's really hard to find patient zero or where something has started. So they had to pinpoint the causation.
Yeah. They can, for her next semester because Miss Hannah's adding forensics to her next class.
Wow.
Very good.
Good job.
So that's a great way to segue our middle school into some of our CT.
Yeah, and that's why I want to add forensics, because I feel like it's, it's very medical. But, um, like, Mr. Stumbo is doing, you know, the engineering side of it. And then we have our medical side, but along with the metals, medical side with the forensics, it's going to add more of that. Medical is science, but it's going to add more of that. The skills that some of the kids are really wanting to do, like, they want to do, like, maybe crime scene stuff. But a lot of that can also be, we had to actually discuss this over our dinner tonight, about how with forensics, well, sometimes you have to be a medical detective in a sense that someone may have been poisoned. And you need to collect that evidence. And I also am guilty of watching forensic files. So I'm like, I love forensic files. My sister teaches forensics. Why not tap into that at other schools and see if they can get us the stuff here to be able to do the medical detectives and the forensics?
Right. I think that's fantastic.
Girls, one of our toughest high school courses is, uh, the biomed class. And, uh, I've been in that class several times when they've been working on activities. And they do these exact activities. So you guys are doing high school level work, so congratulations.
And the way that it's planned, um, Eric's, or Mr. Stumbo's class actually leads into our class because he's the one with neurological disorders. And so them, having that basic understanding, when they come to my class, then they're learning about the nervous system and the why in there. So they really work well together. Whoever did that place went and did a great job because they worked really well together.
Good job. Fantastic both groups.
Very good.
This is our eighth grade group. Mr. Stumbo's was seventh. Now in sixth grade, we have space and flight. But we were a little late, we were getting that started, so we don't have anything to shoot today on that.
Thank you. That's very good.
We'll get this now.
You all did a great job all of this.
Oh, thank you. Oh, that's okay. I'm just trying to get them hooked back up. Go ahead and leave if you need to. Yes. Yes, that's fine.
While they're, um, getting that together, you all had to listen to me almost three decades. I don't know if we'll be saying much this evening. I know it surprised you. The only thing that I want to point out, um, we have done our winner star benchmark. I put more stock into the state benchmark, but we, uh, I guess the next two weeks we'll be finishing that. So I don't have any results from that. In reading on our star benchmark from fall to winter, fifty-eight percent of our kids scored above typical growth between fall and winter. And sixty-one percent in math. If you can keep the kids growing, I know lots of times on scores, it looks like, mm. But if you really dive deep into the scores, the growth is what you want.
Right.
And that's our percentages. Okay, uh, Ms. Hensley is going to present. She's our counselor.
Counselor of the year.
For two different years, counselor of the year.
Two times. Counselor of the year.
So this is year five here? I think. Um, six in the county, but five here. Um, I always have just a little template to show you guys of what we've done with the counseling program so far this year. Um, we've had a lot of events already in the fall. We did our annual reality store and Get a Life. And we had our career week. And we had our fourth annual career day. That went really well. Um, if you look on the right there, we've got some upcoming events. Um, on the back, I have a save the date. If you guys, we would love to invite you guys on February tenth. During the day, we're going to have presentations for the students. And then we have a parent presentation in the evening. But this is, um, a group that comes from Homeland Security. And they're going to talk about, um, online risks, protecting yourself, protecting the parents, protecting your students, digital threats, things like that. So that's going to be, I'm looking forward to that. Um, so far with counseling, I've had two hundred and nineteen individual sessions. Um, students can self-refer themselves or, um, staff members, um, parents, other people. Anybody can refer. And then once I meet with students, I can also refer to the social worker. We have our mental health counselor, she's here one day a week this year. Um, or if we need to refer outside, we can do that as well. Um, one hundred percent of students receive counselor in the classroom lessons. So those are where I go in during either skills or intermurals and talk to the students about different things, whether it be academic or social emotional. Um, so far, I've done fifteen of those. We also have our Discover Your Future Career Exploration Program. I believe this is the third year we fully have implemented that. Um, so our eighth graders will have been through the whole program. Um, they get four or five clusters each year. So by the end of the time, they get them all. Um, I did some small groups, um, in December. I took, I looked at our data for seventh and eighth graders and some students who struggled either academically or with attendance or behaviorally. I got a group of them together and we worked on study skills and organization. Um, there was growth that was shown through those pre and post surveys that we did. And I'm going to continue, continue second semester with a new group of students. Um, and the ones that I had the small group with in the fall, I'm going to meet with individually, weekly, and track their progress, um, through this next six weeks. Uh, parent contacts, um, we have our family meetings that we always do, five oh four meetings, SAT meetings. The social worker and I have gone on home visits. Um, we also have our outside groups and clubs. We have Marshall's Hats Program. And then this year, we started a new program, which has been awesome. It was with our eighth grade students and it's called Read to Me. And we have a group that goes to playmates and a group that goes to the elementary. And every week, they read children's books to different, they each have a classroom they're assigned to. And it's been really cool just to see their growth, just personally, just, they were really nervous at the beginning and now they love it. And just the relationships they're building with those kids in those classrooms. It's really cool. So, yeah, I think that's everything. Um, I've got our upcoming events on the right there. We are participating in the NAEP assessment with eighth grade in March. And then March twenty-fourth, this was actually rescheduled. We're taking a select group of our eighth graders to Marshall. And it's called the Explorer Academy. And it's going to expose them to manufacturing careers. So we're excited for that as well.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The NAEP assessment, you, you guys were selected for that?
Yeah.
And I know, I knew that. I'm, I'm trying to remember who else was selected. So when they give the, uh, that NAEP is how they measure how education is progressing across the, across the nation. So when you see those national reports, it's off of that test. So they select random schools across the state. So I'm glad you guys have a chance to participate.
Several years ago, we did it two or three years in a row, but we haven't been selected for several years.
Yeah.
So, but do you see why she's counselor of the year?
Absolutely.
State is, I mean, she's absolutely awesome.
Fantastic work, thank you.
Um, one of our strategic plan goals is attendance. Of course, you know, one of our county goals also is attendance. Um, Mr. Watkins has worked very hard this year, um, on an attendance program. And we are seeing wonderful results. So he's going to talk to you about those.
Yeah, like Mr. Ryder said, you know, one of our strategic plan goals this year is attendance. And we've done some things in the past last year. We decided to kind of go way bigger than we had previously. We just, we just figured, you know, we need to make it a much more concentrated effort. So kind of discussed some of our goals, some of our action steps and some of the progress we've seen so far. School-wide goals, from an actual school standpoint, our average daily attendance was actually pretty solid last year. Um, ninety-two point four, uh, was our, was our number last year. Pretty solid. We set, so we passed the bar really, really high this year for that goal. We set ninety-five percent. Probably pretty lofty, but we kind of figured, you know, we're already good, let's try to be great. The number that was kind of concerning last year was our chronic absent rate. This number is the kids that are below ninety percent attendance. Um, that ninety percent number is really important because they've done a million studies on attendance. And that's when we really start seeing issues. We start seeing, uh, like, the biggest issue is dropout rates. Kids are nine times more likely to drop out if they're below ninety percent. Increased mental health issues, behavioral issues, judicial system, test scores, like, we actually started digging deeper to it a couple of years ago. Um, these are our test scores from last year. What we did was looked at our actual test scores and compared our actually chronically absent kids with the rest of the school. Um, I'm going to get through all of it with you, but seventh grade, for example, um, in math last year, our seventh grade was thirty-five percent proficient. That's a little bit above the state average. However, our chronically absent kids were only six percent proficient. That's a nineteen percent drop off. English, probably some of the best scores in the county, if not the state. We were twenty percent above the statewide proficiency. However, our chronically absent kids, seventeen percent lower at fifty percent. So what that data kind of shows us is, if our kids are, you know, butts in seats in the building, they're receiving quality education. So our goal is to get them here so they're receiving that quality instruction. So our number last year was at twenty-two percent, a little high. So our goal is to get them to twenty percent. Uh, we also set some individual student goals for our kids. Uh, we kind of use a little phrase, nine or less. We want our kids to be above ninety-five percent attendance. That's where the data kind of shows there's no real considerable impact if kids are above ninety-five percent in school. So we kind of push kids out of that. And we want to really avoid at all costs that chronically absent number, um, being a below at ninety percent number. Um, so the action steps we're taking. So the action steps we're taking, we really try to use more of the carrot than the stick. You know, we really try to use incentives. We use individual incentives. We do a strive for five drawing every week. We kind of expanded that all year. We started a couple of gift cards. We said, you know, the kids really liked that. So we kind of made it even bigger. So what we do is at the end of every week, we put all the kids who are here all day, every day for the week, we just draw names out, and they come to my office and they get just some goodies we have picked out for them. We do treats, sometimes do gift cards, but the kids want to respond well to that. Kids actually complained in the hallway to me, like, why didn't I get drawn this week? And we got this brand. It's like, let's get one last week. Why do you want to get it? So they really just seemed to really respond to it. I get right before lunch, so the kids get to like, have their little snack or good drink for lunch. It's kind of a little like mini trophy for them. We did, we've done some breakfast parties for the perfect attendance. Kids did donuts for the first six weeks for kids that had perfect attendance. We did a perfect attendance drawing. Amazon was so nice to donate to us gift cards and Kindle Fire tablets. So we did our drawing before the break. We had a kid win a Kindle Fire, and they were pumped. So Amazon just gave it, they were really generous. They just gave it to us. We're hoping to continue that relationship. Amazon unfortunately has gone through some massive layoffs, and the guy that we worked with, he was part of those layoffs. So I think their community outreach program is probably one of the things we're getting at. So I'm working with him to hopefully find somebody that I can contact with to keep that going. Groups have been our biggest, probably new thing we've done this year. We try to do some more group incentives. We started a first to 10 wins home room contest. So every day, a home room gets over 95% attendance. They get a point. When they get 10 points, they're eligible for a prize. The prizes can either be pizza party, extra murals, like a pi me in the face. So they've chose, they've chosen the pi me in the face. I like, they've done it twice so far. Pizza party's actually the biggest one they like. Surprising to me, but they like the pizza parties. And it's been a big hit so far. The kids really, really respond well to it. Some groups got so competitive that we actually had to kind of do a handicap system because we had some home rooms that were winning over and over again. So we actually, so every time they got it, they actually increased their total. We've had home rooms that have to get 15 or 20 points before they win. They're still winning occasionally. So we do two winners every cycle, then we reset the cycle. And it's been, it's been going pretty well so far. We did a public service announcement contest. That was actually really fun. We did our school leadership council. They made it into groups, and they made public service announcements for, 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 for school attendance. It was actually really fun. They actually included members of our staff involved, and it kind of like, got took over the school for a week or so because they were pulling teachers out of class. Hey, you'd be my, you'd be my, you know, my absent kid for my PSA video, or you'd be my grumpy business. So it was a really fun experience. And the only issue we had with those is they actually ended up being like, they ended up getting too into them. Instead of being a 90-second video, it was kids making like, 10-minute videos. Like, I'll bring on Shane Nelson, grandson. Shane's group was, they did like a seven and a half minute video. Not only they have a seven and a half minute video, they had a minute and a half trailer for their PSA and a blooper reel. It was, it was awesome. I was like, this kid knows way they're going to do as far as this is concerned. I've done some schoolwide initiatives as well. We gave our kids the goal the first six weeks. We wanted to get a good start. If you guys over 95% attendance, we would pretty much just stop school for the day and do a schoolwide kickball tournament. They hit their goal. So the first, in the first six weeks, we went all the way over to the main football field. We did a schoolwide kickball tournament. Staff even had a team. I may or may not pull the hamstring, but we were all on ice for a few days for playing a few games of kickball, but the kids had a blast. And right now, for the four, six weeks, we're doing the same thing, except we're going to do a schoolwide volleyball tournament with the same thing. It's fit last year for one of our rewards, and the kids really liked it. So that's kind of our goals. We are doing some interventions, though. I work with kids that are, I kind of find at risk, kids that are between that 88 to 91%, who are starting to slip. I just pull them in, and I meet with them, and I kind of explain some of the issues of being chronically absent. Some kids aren't even aware that like, they're chronically absent. I pop them to, you know, you know what chronically absent is? Like, yeah, I think so. It's missing school. Like, what percentage do you think that's it? If I was like, oh, 50%? 50%, your parents are in jail right now. No, it's a lot higher than you may think. They don't understand that. Because I point this out to them. I'm like, if you're at 88% attendance, over the course of a year, you've missed a month of school. At 83%, you've missed an entire six-week term, right? So kids like, when they start, I know they don't really realize that. And I work with them. What I do is they get off the chronically absent list in the semester, I'll buy them like lunch or pizza or something like that. And it's, it's a nice little incentive. And if I don't, I see with them again, I kind of just keep tabs on them, usually about 10 to 12 kids. Kids that are in more serious need, our counseling department's always done a good job with this, our counselors and social workers, they do those kind of big picture meetings with people that need some actual serious counseling or social or resource help. So they do a good job as far as that's concerned. So our data so far, A to A mark, A to A mark's important. That kind of gives you kind of a really good kind of baseline for how well your school's doing for attendance. At this point last year, we were at 92.44% attendance. We're up to 93.89, below our goal of 95%, but we're still seeing some solid growth at 1.45%. The biggest jump we've seen so far, it's probably the biggest thing we're excited for, is our chronic rate. At this time last year at 26.5, we're down to 14.7. So that's about 11%. So so far, it's working really well. We've got to keep pushing, though. We always get kind of scared into the year because into the year, once we get testing done, people start planning vacations, that number will jump a little bit. So we're trying to get as far that, below that as possible, so we don't see that jump. But really, it's important before the GSA. You want those kids here as much as possible. That way, they're getting that, that instruction before the GSA. So we were kind of curious if this was working, if the kids cared, you know, what's the other factors involved. We actually gave a survey to our student body, to kind of get some feedback as far as they were concerned. First, we want to see if our kids actually enjoy coming to school. And you can see, we're actually, kids for the most part actually do seem to enjoy coming here. You know, most about, you know, 85% do seem to enjoy it, at least to some extent. Very few never want to come to school. Only 12 kids said they never want to come. So that's a positive sign, I feel. Most kids didn't miss very much the first six weeks. You know, these 22 to 11 were chronically absent kids. So not too bad as far as that was concerned. Major isn't a miss. This one was kind of one I was really interested in because it's sickness, you know, there's something a whole lot you can do about that. If you start seeing other factors, that's when you start getting concerned, starting to have other things you need to do. You know, not really a whole lot of other issues. The main other issues we saw were things like oversleeping, hours appointments, family trips. So we're, we're excited that our main issue was sick and illness. Very few kids mentioned anything about bullying or safety issues. So they felt this is a safe environment. We asked the kids after the first six, do you feel like our school actually encourages good attendance? You know, 80% said yes. So that's a good sign. Strive for Five is a very popular program. Most of them said that either it impacted a lot or little as far as their attendance was concerned. You know, and we want to make sure the kids were aware of these as well. We put it out there, you don't know if you know middle school kids, but you tell them things 30, 40 times. So we want to make sure they're aware of it. Most kids were aware of it. Most kids said it had an impact. Same with first to 10. Seen the kids really did well. They seemed, that was maybe the best one. I think the kids liked that one because it's home room. So they kind of take a team aspect to it. They kind of enjoy kind of, every morning, they try to see, wait for the kids to get in. Did everybody come today? All right, we get our point. They get the point and award on the wall. So they seem to really respond well to the first to 10 one. Kickball tournament, kids really responded well to that as well. They loved it. This is really good this year because, you know, we did the Lewis Foundation stuff in previous years, and those were really fun. However, a lot of our kids, you know, didn't qualify for those, which was, which was a good incentive for the kids that did qualify. But this one's good because it's a whole school. If our school beats that goal, every kid gets to go. And so every kid, even the kids who may not be the best behavioral issues, they sometimes have really good attendance. They feel as though they're actually contributing. They feel like they're being rewarded for at least that aspect of that. So perfect breakfast party, the kids really liked. It's kind of like, you know, nice little extra boost. And one thing we're going to work on here second semester as well, now we want to kind of address, okay, we've got the kids here. We're working on improving, you know, one of the things we see a lot is kids who are chronically absent. One of the biggest fears, one of the reasons why they're chronically absent is because they have anxiety coming back to school. So we're trying to figure out what, so fortunately, put in place for those kids who miss, so they don't feel as anxious coming back to school. So we're picking some ideas around it. Next year, our big kind of initiative, next step's going to be like, you know, some kind of peer support groups that kids have, you know, you have kids chronically absent, and they know they have this kid that they can rely on, that can be their, kind of their point of reference when they get back. They're not falling behind, not scared, and not, that seems to be the number one conversation I have is, you know, why aren't you at school? Why I'm anxious? Why are you anxious? Because I'm behind on my classes. Why are you behind on classes I missed? It's kind of like constant cycle of them always having these kind of things here. But that's kind of our next step is seeing what we can do for those kids who are missing a lot, happily support them getting caught up. So that's all I really have. It's going pretty well so far attendance wise. We're hoping that this first six weeks goes well. This is kind of a make or break six weeks. If you kind of get through this four, six weeks, there's not really a lot that can happen after that. It's a barring, it's a really weird thing that can really drastically massively impact your attendance that much. So that's for that.
We made a change about attendance this year. We had always approached it as a negative thing, you know. I mean, last year, I think they did three tardies were detention and this and that. Well, during our admin academy, one of the things that we talked about was being positive about it. So we changed our tardy slip and everything. It's like a movie ticket, you know, and we're happy to see you in this net. We have gone completely positive, and it's made the biggest difference. Now, some of these programs, we were just going to do the first six weeks, you know, to get the kids coming, but they were so successful that, you know, that we just went on with them.
We kind of just hammered, we just kind of just hammered them with attendance and just hoping that like, they get, I mean, hopefully they realize it matters. So that's all we talk about for them is getting here, getting here, getting here, getting here.
So yeah.
That's all we really have unless you all have any questions.
Facility needs, you know, I know we're working on the renovations for the school. Is there anything that's pressing facility-wise that's a problem?
Not right now, Lou.
I know you've had some HVAC problems, but I know they've been working on it.
Yeah, those are almost fixed.
Okay, good.
That's real good news.
Yeah.
We'd love to hear that.
Yeah.
Was the electric and stuff at the baseball fields and bathrooms, is that all taken care of?
Oh, I don't know. Do you know?
No.
I can find out.
The baseball, what was the question?
Do you know, Will?
Mm-hmm.
Whether the electric at the baseball field is working?
Well, when I come through the other night, I saw lights out there.
Well.
And I guess we're talking for the
Bathrooms.
Press box.
Oh, press box, yeah.
Yeah, so that, and the rest rooms down here.
I think I talked to them back, about it back in the fall.
I tried the main little league field.
Okay. I will check with Kristen and get back to you in a minute. I figured that it is because if not, she wouldn't be in my ear.
Somebody we don't, no means goodness.
I appreciate yours.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, we appreciate you guys coming out tonight.
Well, thank you.
If you want, as you go out, Mr. Stumbo's prepared to show you the printer, you know, where the kids stay.
That'd be great.
And it's on your way out.
Give us just a minute to finish this.
We've got a few more items on the agenda.
Yeah.
Then we'll be glad to do that.
Thank you all.
Yes. All right. New business, consider for approval, the purchase requisition ordering quotes in excess of $5,000. That's pages one and two.
Motion.
Motion by Randy, second by Jonita. Any questions or concerns on those purchase orders?
That's the second purchase order there for the school flasher at Catalog Elementary. That is grant funded. We have to pay for it upfront, and then we'll be reimbursed. We get to apply for a grant every year. So that's been accomplished.
Okay. Is the non-food purchase stuff, is that consumable stuff? What is that? I know we had approved a pretty large chunk of change for equipment earlier on, like a quarter of a million, I believe.
Yeah, this was broken up. They had originally done a $150,000 PO, and, and we had them break that up.
Just like for plastics.
Yeah. Yeah.
The disposable things that we have to have most likely.
Yeah.
Any other questions or concerns?
It's the napkins and
Yeah, all the disposable items. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. For two, consider for approval, the change order, number one, for the CK alumni gym renovation, pages three and four.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Jonita, second by Dennis.
We talked about this right before Christmas.
Right.
And I asked for permission to go ahead and sign off on it so that they could get the work done over Christmas break, and it has been completed.
Completed, no problem. All, all done. All right. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Superintendent report.
Yeah, I do have a few things I want to go over, and I have your agendas for next Tuesday night. So that information will be in there.
Thank you.
Number one, there's a form in there. You guys have to complete, it's the financial statement, single audit questionnaire. Definitely need to be completed. If you have that, then there's a couple of items on the agenda that I just wanted to bring up. And if you have any questions or anything like that, we can deal with that Tuesday since it's a small, nice agenda. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention. We have the lease for the Westmoreland property, for the portion that playmates issue. We've talked about doing a lease for that. So the lease is on the agenda for your report. We'll see if you'll find that in your information. And then also, there's a property transfer on your agenda. That is also the Westmoreland property. So years ago, and there's a map in your packet. The metal section with the old roof that is, I'll call it brayed out, is the portion that years ago, that the board transferred to the Wayne County Community Services Organization. It's the grayed out portion. Now, items number six and seven, that is our current, where the pre-K is currently operating. So the lease that's in your board packet will cover six and seven.
Okay.
The gray area is the Wayne County Community Services Organization. And then the items to the right, it looks like, what, 21, or no, one and two, the 9030, that's the property that was deeded over to, that's the property that was deeded over to the Historical Society.
Okay.
It's a separate attachment.
That's one.
Yeah, it's probably in there.
Okay.
So the, when we were doing all this work to get this property deeded over and doing the utilities work so we could get the utilities in place, what came up is building number 24. Building number 24 is the white roof. That is the old cafeteria building, and it has been used by the Wayne County Community Service Organization for years. They used to serve senior mills out of there. So anyway, I'm on the Wayne County Community Services Organization board, and I know that over the years, they made investments in that building. There were, you know, they had to put new gutters on it. I think they might have had to put a new roof on it, that type of thing. They have thought that that was theirs. But in doing this work, when I was on the assessors page, it was still listed under us. So when we had the survey done and had the deed work done on this property, I asked them to check that building to see if it had been deeded over to the Wayne County Community Services Organization when the large portion of the building originally was. And there's no record of that. So what's on your agenda is to deed that property over to the Wayne County Community Services Organization. And again, they've been taking care of it for well over a decade. And it's not as substantial as what it looks.
Yeah, it's very small.
Yeah. So if there's any concerns about that at all, if there's any information that you want, I'll, I'll bring you some information about the Community Services Organization before Tuesday's meeting. But if there's any, anything else you want, just let me know, and then we can talk about it Tuesday night. But I just wanted to give you a heads up about those items.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
That's it?
Hold on, I think we have one question. I just wanted to, whenever we, we just said, who's in charge of the financial part of that, Wayne County Community Services now.
Yeah.
Okay.
No problem.
All right. Try again.
Motion.
Motion. Second. Motion by Randy, second by Jonita. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. It is 5:30.
I'd like to speak, everybody, before you leave. I just wanted to chat.